It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and call the order, the regular city council meeting for Monday, October 23rd, 2023. We can say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Alsberg?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening as submitted, unless there are changes that need to be made.
Who to approve the agenda?
Thank you so much. Good support.
Senator.
Thank you, Bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Yes, come forward, state your name, address. You know the drill, Earl.
Hi, um, go Blue.
Oh.
Go Hornets. Earl Wolf, 503 Bismarck. I'm here. We have a card in front of you for the second annual Veterans Day banquet.
Yes.
This was a, uh, a jump in the fire, uh, event last year put on by the, our depot museum. It's their annual fundraiser. So pretty much half the cost is your dinner and the other half is a donation. It was a great, great event. We hope some city dignitaries come. Uh, we have a great program. We have a great speaker. Uh, it's at Brookshire, you know, steak, fish, or chicken kind of event. Uh, the Legion then will be involved in all of that sort of thing. Uh, Dor Warner is our speaker. He was a medic on a hospital ship that traveled up and down Vietnam coast as, as helicopters came in. And what's even cooler is that he's 18 years old and shot fantastic Kodak Chrome's. And so he's got a great collection of images that will project. So he got a great program. You got a great cause. You got a great dinner. And the show doesn't play till 7:30. So hey, I hope that, uh, you can come or somebody at least representing the city can come. Um, uh, sometimes, as, as the case last year, some people stepped forward in groups and bought tickets for area vets where they city staff, police department, whatever. If they want to go, we'll find them a ticket.
So, uh, a lot of people have stepped forward and says, I'll buy, I'll buy, I'll get four tickets,
give them to an area vet that's, lives in Williamson, works in Williamson, serves in Williamson, you know, whatever. And so, uh, it makes for a great evening. So just want to throw that out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Earl. And that's a, a great, um, I'm glad that it's becoming an annual event. And certainly if anybody's interested with the postcards that we received, if you did not, please see Earl. And yes, it should be one in your mailbox. But let me see that really quick.
I don't know. I had it in the one.
You do. There's a mailbox. We'll show you afterwards. But anyways, um, just for our viewing community again, it is the second annual Veterans Day banquet, a fundraiser for the Williamson Museum at the depot. Brookshire in Saturday, November 11th, social hour, 5:30, dinner, 6:00, program at 7:00, $50 a ticket. Uh, you can definitely reserve these, um, through the depot or the, uh, Williamson Museum. And you can pay for them with Venmo. Uh, the speaker is Dor Warner. So great opportunity to, um, listen to his story and, uh, hear a little bit of history and also, um, help our local museum. Anyone else for audience participation? Come forward.
Hello, I'm a journalism student at MSU.
Yes.
I came to the meeting, last meeting in September.
Yes.
And at that meeting, you guys, um, motioned for there to be a social district within, um, downtown. And after the meeting, I just asked if a few of you guys could stay around because I just have a couple of questions to ask about, like, becoming a social district and like what that means for the community.
All right, great. Thank you. And can you state your name, please?
Uh, my name's Emily Lance.
Emily Lance. All right. Thank you, Emily. Appreciate you being here this evening. Go Green.
Go Green.
All right, uh, council meeting minutes of October 9th, 2023. I'm looking for approval unless there are changes that need to be made.
Who can prove the minutes?
Thank you so much. Your support. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you had an opportunity to, uh, review your accounts payable for this evening for the city.
Yeah, I did.
Great, thank you.
Um, so it's pretty standard stuff throughout most of it. Obviously, the bigger expenses were related to, uh, the construction going on on Putnam, which I know nothing about at this point. Um, and so, uh, we have a lot of expenses going on there. Um, but in general, pretty standard stuff. So if anyone has questions, I'll make a motion.
Perfect.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, checks 77045 through 77097, EFT 582, or NACH 572 through 595 for a grand total of $400,045.55.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions regarding our accounts payable for this evening? If not, I'm looking for support for that motion.
Support.
Thank you. Uh, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. Moving right along to our action items. We just have two for this evening. The first is to appoint Lee Baumgarst to our Downtown Development Authority for a term to expire 6/30 of 2027.
So.
Thank you so much. Your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Fantastic. Now we have our early voting plan, and I believe I'm going to turn this right over to Holly.
Okay, so in your packet, um, there's a resolution that kind of breaks down what we're going to be doing along with our, um, early voting plan. Um, these have to be submitted to the state and the county, um, to be approved, um, before our upcoming primary election in either February or March. We're not sure about that yet, but we're going to keep moving forward. Um, we did kind of spell out what days we're going to be open. We're doing the 8:30 to 4:30, um, hoping that like that half hour before we can kind of get people going. And then the half hour before, you know, 5 o'clock, we can get it closed up. So it has to be eight hours per day for the nine days of early voting. Um, Barb and I are going to be the supervisors. And so both of our names are listed, um, at our early voting site, which is here at City Hall.
All right.
And we just need approval from council. All right.
Who would like to make that motion for Holly?
Make a motion to approve the resolution on early voting.
All right. Thank you so much.
Senator.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Holly, I, yes.
Have we done this somewhere in the past?
This is the first time.
Brandon. Coming in from the ballot initiative.
And Holly, just one real quick question. Um, how is this going as far as preparing? I know that you and Barb are listed as your supervisors, but have you had, um, any success in reaching out to find additional election workers?
We've actually had a few people already apply.
Great.
So we're hopeful that we can definitely fill all those spots. I know some council members have even been offered to help and that's perfectly fine because, um, your council election isn't until November.
Right.
You can always serve in February, March, or August.
All right. Special election opportunities. All right, great. Well, thank you so much. Um, we have the motion. We have the support. If there's no other discussions or questions, I will ask Holly to call the roll, please. Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Alsberg?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along to our discussion items. We have our road diet. John, do we have an update?
Just a brief one. I got a, uh, communication today from somebody that I've known for a long time that works in, um, sort of the public outreach for MDOT. And they saw our road diet come across their desk. So that's good. So they're going to have their own public information meeting sometime either no, no, late November, early December. Kind of trying to steer them away from late November because of the obvious, because of Thanksgiving, but they'll set that. And then, um, she couldn't really say if it's going to be in their funding plan or not, but again, it looks pretty favorable that it will be. So good news.
Great, thanks. And Scott, construction project updates. How's Putnam going? Brandon says he has no clue what's going on.
Yeah, Brandon has no clue because they're almost in front of his driveway.
As, as I was leaving today, I wasn't sure I was coming because they were doing the whole in front of my driveway.
So yeah, they are, are making great progress running the sanitary sewer of that second block.
Great.
Um, there's good news on the horizon that we've been told that the pavers are supposed to be in maybe later this week in the first block.
Excellent.
And hopefully that includes the intersection of Church Street. So that'll help relieve a lot of baggage for a lot of folks.
Yep.
Um, it was going to happen last week, but the weather really got in the way. So, um, tomorrow's a wonderful day. On the, on the weather apps, I hope it turns out that way and warms up and sunshine and a little bit of breeze and helps dry things out, which is great just before the end.
Yep. Yep. So we're winding down on that project. We still feel like we're going to hit the mark. Um, unless we get some serious inclement weather, um, we feel like everything's just kind of moving the way it should.
They're, they're on target. You know, they're, they got to run the sanitary sewer up. They've got all the utilities done from the intersection of, of Church Street to the south. And they have to run the sanitary and the water mains. And then they'll do the service connections. And then after that is try and get it buttoned up with paper. So.
Excellent.
It's, it's going very well.
Perfect. Everybody keep your fingers crossed. Um, yeah, we do have a couple of days of good weather this week. Um, and let's just keep our fingers crossed if that carries through.
Another piece of construction news?
Yes.
Uh, Loax Construction is supposed to be moving in next week for the pavilion in the park.
Awesome. Fantastic. All right.
He meant moving into your house.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I don't live in the park. I don't live in the park. However, if you wanted to build a pavilion for me for this weekend, I'd be totally cool with that. Um, all right, fantastic. That's good news too, because I know that's been on our docket for a couple of years to get that done. So I'm sure that everybody that uses McCormick Park will be excited to have that new pavilion, um, over there. All right. Well, that concludes our discussion items. Moving along to correspondence received. We do not have any. So we're going to jump right into department head reports and I'll jump over to John Hannafin, our city manager.
Thank you. So a lot of moving parts, a lot of things happening in the last couple of weeks. Um, just want to start out with the, the joint meeting that most of us were able to attend. I thought there were some really, really, um, sort of frank and honest discussions about a couple of different topics. I, I think there's probably still some more discussions that we had around housing. You know, I guess I'll say I was a little disappointed that we kind of deviated from that once we got to the actual agenda item. But knew that as may, here we are. Uh, I thought the discussion around, uh, U-Sports, U-Sport, U-Sports programming was excellent. And I think that's a, that's not anything that we're going to fix, you know, before the, the end of the calendar year and even the end of the fiscal year. But I think that's another, you know, sort of working group or task force group to, to really figure that out. And that's critically important. I think you guys all know, uh, that, you know, all my kids were big into sports and, but they did start like at the very lowest levels and they didn't pay 300 bucks a sport. It was 20 bucks a sport. So, so there's miles for that. So that was good. DDA, I thought we had an excellent meeting. Um, we, we approved, uh, purchasing holiday lights. We, we approved the, the holiday commercials again, which I know are, are very well received. And we also talked about, uh, getting on track with our, our marketing plan and, and the rebranding. So it was an excellent, excellent meeting. I'm glad you appointed a, a new member to the DDA tonight.
Yes.
Please involve the Williamson Pub. And I've met with her a couple of times. And I, I think, you know, she's fantastic so far. And I think it's great that we have a restaurant.
Yes.
On the DDA board.
Yep.
TIPA, we had another, um, good meeting. We, we had our annual meeting. We talked about, you know, like activities from the last year, but we also talked about the future plan for TIPA. Uh, unfortunately, the Cold Storage LLC wasn't able to, to put together a plan to move forward on the Ice House. But at the next DDA, or sorry, next TIPA meeting, we're going to be issuing a request for proposal. I asked for them to adopt a motion to direct me to do that. So then we stay on track with the formality of it. So we'll issue an RFP for that property and, and hopefully that will bear some fruit. We did have some interest in the property after Cold Storage had signed a purchase agreement. So that's kind of the way it works sometimes. So hopefully that, that party, those parties are still interested. Parks, Parks, uh, we had a, we, we talked about the, the draft plan and the survey today. And I don't want to steal, you know, any of the liaison's thunder, um, for being at meetings. But again, we'll, uh, finalize the plan. We'll be in the public hearing stage for that for the months of, from mid-November till, uh, really the end of, end of December. And then we'll ask council to adopt the formal plan. And, um, shortly after the start of the new year, really the first meeting of January. And then we'll get that submitted to the state, which will allow us to be eligible to, uh, seek grants to the Natural Resource Trust Fund. So, so that was good. Uh, and the last thing, the, the county presentation for the trail grant and also the joint project for river clearing with Meridian and Williamstown. They moved that to, I think it's November 9th. Um, it's, it's definitely in November. So they moved that. So we'll be there representing the city. And, uh, I think it's early, maybe the same night as the council meeting. But like I said, I think that starts at 5:30. So I'll be hustling back to, to the meeting. So.
All right.
So that's what's going on.
Lots of good information. Any questions for John? Yes.
Any additional information on what happened with the Ice House thing? Um, did they run on the funding? They run on people?
In a word, they said that the financing was difficult for them. So, yeah.
Loans are more expensive now, aren't they?
A lot.
All right. Um, great. Scott? Hi.
Hi.
You're up next.
I'm up next.
I'm following my list.
All right. Um, well, I have some news to present. I've turned in my resignation for the city. Um, a really good opportunity came along that, uh, I just can't say no to.
Okay.
So that's happening in my life. It's really good for me and for my family.
Sure.
Um, gives me an opportunity to work a little closer to home a little more often. And, uh, actually work with some younger engineers and mentor some people, which I'm very interested in doing as well. So I've had some really great years here. I've, and I, Williamson's in my heart. I mean, it's, you know, working with the, the people here and the community and the, the, the work that goes on here with the infrastructure. I do everything I can for the city. So.
You've, you've been involved in some major, major projects for this city. We couldn't have done it without you being in the position and, and having the knowledge that you have. And I think you're on 15 years?
Not quite.
Okay, close. But, um, I have always said to every council member, to anybody that's been on boards and, and city staff, it's, it's always, you have to do what's best for you, best for your family. And so I'm, I'm excited for you for this opportunity, but I'm sad for us. So, um, how much longer do we have you?
I'm here physically this week and I've got a little time next week.
I'm completely mentally checked out though.
I'm glad I got such a good report on Putnam then.
If I could, and I haven't worked with Scott for very long, but we were talking the other day and obviously, you know, you know, after begging him to stay, then he pointed out, he's been working in Williamson in some capacity for about 31 years, which is, which is pretty amazing.
Sure.
And so I told him, it's like the math. You're not really going away.
Yeah, no, we know how to sign here.
Moving to, moving to the private sector. I mean, there's always, there's opportunities and he'll really, he's been, done, done a good job for us here. And we know he'll be a resource for us moving forward. And he's going to help us tidy some things up in the, in the months to come and know that he'll be available informally and then possibly on a more formal basis moving forward.
Well, he did mention that it was an offer that he couldn't refuse though.
Right.
That sounds kind of lobbish.
Good fellow's godfather, you know.
At least he was right next to you there.
Yeah, if you need help, he can.
Well, we know you won't be a stranger. Like you said, I mean, once you've been a part of this community, it's hard to stop being a part of it. So, um, we thank you for your time and service here in, in the city. And we know that you won't be far. And we're going to keep your phone number and all that good stuff. And please don't change it.
No, it's, it's going to stay.
All right, good. All right. Well, moving right down the road, Chief, how are you?
I am great. Um, we've started giving out the no parking notice warnings, uh, citywide each night. Call pending. We have been giving out between 10 and 20 each night. So, uh, we're getting closer to the time when the warnings will come to an end.
Yeah.
And the citations will take over. So just a fair warning. Uh, the police department's going to be participating this Saturday with trick or treating, uh, downtown as well as a scavenger hunt.
Nice.
So, uh, I don't know what the clue is yet, but we'll, we'll find out. Other than that, everything is great.
All right, great. You're settling in and.
I am.
Spending some time out in the community and not behind the desk?
More and more, yes.
Good, excellent. Well, I'm sure everybody's appreciating getting to know our new chief. And we look forward to the updates as they come. And yes, uh, this Saturday should be very exciting in, um, downtown. It'll be the witches and warlock?
Wizards.
Wizards, witches and wizards. Um, downtown businesses will have trick or treating. The Chamber of Commerce has got some great activities planned. It's really a full day event. Um, downtown looks great with all of the, uh, lampposts that have been decorated for the Decorate Your Lamppost contest. And in addition, um, the Williamson Red Cedar Garden Club and Hamley Farms did a tremendous job decorating our, our light posts and our, um, planter boxes. So I, you know, thank you to them as well. But yeah, Saturday should definitely be exciting. Everybody, again, keep your fingers crossed for good weather. All right, moving on to committee, subcommittee reports. Who would like to share?
I can start.
All right. Tom, Nisa.
Yeah, we had a Nisa meeting last week. Um, most of it was allocated to talk about budget, but unfortunately we weren't able to do a lot of that because it wasn't prepared yet. So they're hoping to have the budget completed for next month, um, with a goal of voting to pass it in December. So there's a bunch of, um, changes they want to make to some allocated funds from moving from one budget to the other. So that should be some interesting conversation. And, um, they're trying to make some action to, uh, bump the general fund backups. It's been a little low. So we're going to pull out their invested funds and put that into the general fund and, and, uh, that was it. So we'll see what November brings.
So their invested funds, was that like saving for a rainy day and?
They had some, they had some CDs and, uh, you know, invested that are at their end of term.
Okay.
So they kind of had to make the decision to either reinvest them or pull them out. And, uh, we'll be discussing that in detail November to, uh, pull them out and put them in the general fund.
Okay. All right. Well, look forward to having you come back and, and tell us how that budget.
I have a quick question. I was, you mentioned that the, you were discussing the budget, but the budget wasn't available. When does Nisa's fiscal year end?
Just when is that?
Um, I believe it's December 31st.
Okay.
So they're hoping to have this thing passed, December meeting. So we're hoping to get it pretty soon. So we can get a look at it before the November meeting, uh, because that's when most of the discussion will take place. Hopefully there's no issues come November so that we can move right along. They want to schedule a public hearing for December, or November. Soon. They want to schedule it soon. So, um, we'll see how that goes. It'll be, uh, action packed down in Nisa here for a couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for that question, Dan. That was, uh, good. Anybody else? Meetings. Parks.
Parks and Rex.
Yes.
I'm the new guy here, so I'm still figuring this thing out. And what we're learning from this, this new plan, this five-year plan for Parks is all about the funding. Maybe that's city government agenda, I don't know.
Yep.
Parks is all about the funding. And I, it looks like we are, we are positioning ourselves well for funding. So that's, um, and there was a lot of participation with the, the survey and all that. So fun stuff in Parks.
Great. I would hope so.
Yeah, that is. That's what we did.
Terry, look, they did this survey. What were a couple of the top things that came out of the survey?
Well, it was not a dog park. And I know some people who were sort of disappointed. Dog park was number four. But murk paid, um, trails and stuff like that.
Splash pad.
Splash pool would be.
Splash pad. Yep.
Ice skating.
Ice skating, splash pad, like a multi-purpose area, um, over.
But the least expensive of the top four would be the dog park. So I'm just mentioning that.
Um, John, how many, uh, responses did we have to that survey?
218.
218. Yep. All right. Thank you. Anybody else want to report on other meetings? Yes.
TIPA, John already relayed the, uh, the bulk of the meeting, uh, additional things that are going to be coming our ways and explanations to recommendations of what we might do with the funds that are left in TIPA that may be spent. And then also projects that could be funded by TIPA as we go forward.
Excellent. Great. Anyone else? No? All right, great. Um, we have another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Anybody else want to come forward at this time? Yes, Earl?
Unplanned. I just want to thank Scott. I met Scott here 16 years ago. He was with C2AE,
Yep.
presenting the concept for the, uh, McCormick Park renovation when it was just nothing. And he's been nothing but professional and a good friend. And I just really hate to see you go, but I'm happy for you. You've done a great job. I just want you to know that. So.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you very much. Anyone else out in the audience? All right, council member comments. I will start with Dan.
Couple of things. I want to, want to thank Scott for all the good work you've done here over your time. The great project, Middle Street, McCormick Park, even before you were an employee here, did a great job laying that out. And I'm sure, you know, you continued that once you were hired in here, just doing some amazing work you've done here. And thank you for that and hope you continue the success as you move on. One thing I want to touch on, John had mentioned the joint meeting with, um, the township. And there were representatives from the school there and whatnot. And housing had come up. And it's, I mean, that Dr. Spina comes once, if not twice a year, and he gives us the school updates. And he always mentions that, um, the school would very much like to see there be multiple housing developments in the area, in the, in the city or very close surrounding the city. And that was one thing that, that was discussed quite a bit on, at the meeting. And it's understandable. We, we all, we all support the schools. I have three kids in the schools. My wife's a teacher at the school. I've definitely have a huge vested interest in seeing the school succeed. But one thing that was brought up repeatedly at the meeting is there, there's not a whole lot. We, we have, we discussed this at our joint planning commission meeting. We have 104 parcels in the city that are zone residential that are available to be developed that we, we can't force a developer to come in and, and do that. We've, we've done everything we can to get there. Um, it's a, it's a community-wide discussion, not just, uh, Williamson and Williamstown Township, but Wheatfield Township is almost entirely Williamson Schools. Um, Locke Township has a large portion of Williamson School District. You have an edge of Meridian Township. It's, it's an entire area of discussion that has to be had. And how do we want to see growth happen? How much growth? All that. It, it's not just one, uh, one entity and/or two entities that have to figure this out. And I don't think, I don't think the city is doing anything to stand in the way of that. With the zoning that we have and the administration that we have, we're, we're doing the, we're doing the best we have, we can. But it has to be an all-area discussion on what happens, how it happens, all that.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, again, congratulations to Scott. And I was here with Tim. How we brought you and Chief Younga, just, you know, the two superheroes. And you guys were great, both of you. And, uh, wish you the best. And visit us and stuff. So, uh, pertaining to the Ice House, I hope we are able to be willing to aggressively maintain the Ice House, make sure that it stays the Ice House and that we find a use for it. Um, if it needs repairs or whatever, we, I would appreciate if we got on that. Um, in terms of housing, um, appreciate your comments. I think it's important to make sure that we continue discussions on the housing situation and consider, um, uh, creative thoughts that might come up as we continue in the discussion. So that's all I got.
Brandon?
Well, similarly, congratulations and good luck in the future. Um, I've always appreciated that, um, especially when it came to Putnam, that you were able to answer and willing to answer all of my incessant questions about what things were going to happen. So, um, I appreciate you letting me be a pain. So thank you for all your, your services today.
Steve?
Well, with Scott leaving, I'm going to have a lot of accolades to give to somebody because most of mine went to Scott in the year that I've been here. And so echoing what everybody else has said, that you've been a joy to watch and confident that you were doing what was right for Williamson. Appreciate that. Uh, back to the housing talk, and maybe John could, uh, piggyback on it. But at the TIPA meeting, one of the, uh, members indicated that Mishta has just changed the rules and it would allow some TIPA funds to be used for infrastructure for housing. So that might play into the, um, discussion as it relates to how we can do and what we could do. Maybe help the, um, investor to.
Correct.
Do a building for housing.
Carrie?
Really sorry to see you go. Housing, um, the Gordian Knot of the Williamson Town, Williamson Road Overlay District, that is the, I think that's the key to the whole housing business, or at least it's really, really involved in the housing business. So we had this meeting, this, this code with the planning commission and so forth. And that, that whole thing with the Williamstown Overlay, that's, that's, we've just got to get that figured out. I think a lot of things, planning and so forth, a lot of things will drop into place once we finally pick a good picture that we're going to do with Williamson Overlay.
Thank you. Tom?
Excuse me. Um, Scott, it's been a pleasure to work with you for the last few years. So, um, we're sorry to see you go. It'll be tough shoes to fill, but I wish you well in the future. Um, and to my fellow board members, sorry I couldn't make it to the joint meeting earlier this week or last week. Um, we had our annual advisory board meeting in order, so I wasn't available. Um, and then comment wise, um, I guess the only real comment I have is, uh, to hopefully as many people as can can make the trip to Pontiac to support the football boys this weekend. They're, uh, they made the playoffs and, uh, went through some adversity this year and came out, had a really good season. And, uh, they're going to Pontiac.
Another place called again?
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame.
Should be a fun game to watch.
do it without spending more money, you kept everything on budget, you've gotten us through a shift of the DPW located where Old Nation currently sits over to the Progress Cart location, and you enhanced that exponentially, I know you're not probably in your new role, you will ever have to worry about the awful word that we say in the winter, which is water main, so, you know, I hope, I hope that you will frequent us, you know, occasionally, and come back and be able to do, you know, work with us in the future, but thank you so much for, for being the leader that you needed to be for DPW and wastewater treatment plant, and leading that crew through everything that, you know, all the seasons of Williamson, we definitely appreciate it. I'm so excited about this Saturday downtown with, you know, the chamber events and every, all the participation that's going to be happening downtown, I'm excited about the, you know, not just the boys' football team, but there's other sports teams that we don't give enough accolades to, and I believe it was girls' golf or tennis, girls' golf, did well.
Boys' tennis.
Yeah, boys' tennis, so, and we have to remember that it's, it's not always those big sports that, that always get the much-needed appreciation, but it's really everything that our kids are involved in in this community, and that piggybacks on that discussion with our, with our school district, we are great partners with our school district, and we want to help them work through this problem, but again, like Dan said, it's not just the city of Williamson and the Williamstown Township, it's everything that makes up four eight eight nine five that is considered Williamson, so we will continue those discussions, they are good discussions, it's not something that will get solved overnight, but something that we can hopefully help plan for, for the future, for future growth, we certainly do appreciate our school of choice kids that want to go to Williamson and get their education from our highly-ranked academic program here, but it's just a conversation we'll continue to have, and with that, this is not one of my quickest meetings, but it's pretty darn close recently, so I will go ahead and call to adjourn at seven thirty-two.